Just wanted to make one little announcement before we get into the meetings. The swearing-in will take place right after all the meetings and then after that, there are refreshments in the other room. So at this time, I'd like to call the redevelopment commission meeting to order for Wednesday, December 10th. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Rope call, Carol, please.
Mr. Timmy?
Here.
Mr. Conley?
Present.
Mr. Troxel?
Here.
Mr. Schmidt?
Here.
Mr. Genslaw?
Present.
Attorney Oshin?
Present.
Fire Chief Cruzan?
Here.
Deputy Chief Patterson?
Here.
Deputy Police Chief Zagrachi?
Here.
Mr. Novosich?
Here.
Mr. Gorman?
Here.
Mr. Pintar?
Here.
Mr. Hewitt?
Here.
Mr. Volkmann?
Here.
Mrs. Teo?
Present.
Deputy Bert Fisher, Phil, come on, please.
Thank you.
This thing where we're doing rope call, I was looking out, I thought, too bad we don't have the hall filled like this every meeting night, so it's nice to have everyone here. Meeting of the November 19th, 2014 public meeting, put it to the board.
Some movement to chairman.
Second. We have a motion and a second, a discussion. Hearing on all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero. Claims, are there any additional claims, Mrs. Clark?
No additional claims.
No additional claims, put it to the board.
So.
Second motion and a second, a discussion. Hearing on all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero. Correspondence or reports from staff members, Mr. Volkmann?
No correspondence.
Any more houses?
No.
Council members? Any hearing none? There is no old business or new business, so I will take any business from the floor regarding redevelopment, any business from the floor regarding redevelopment, any business from the floor regarding redevelopment. Hearing none, this meeting is adjourned and we will move on to the waterworks.
Good evening, I'd like to call the waterworks board for December 10th. Rope call will be minus Mr. Conley and Mr. Troxel, because the waterboard only allows three members. First thing on the agenda would be the minutes of the November 19th public meeting.
Motion to approve.
Second.
There are motions, there are a second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero. Claims, Mrs. Clark, any additional claims?
No additional claims.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero.
Correspondence, Mr. Volkmann on water?
No correspondence or reports.
No old business, we'll move right into new business, we have one item, resolution 2014-7, a resolution to transfer funds within the category of appropriations. Mrs. Clark?
This is part of the normal end of the year balancing of our appropriations, we can't roll over negative in any funds in the year appropriations, so this is to clear off negative funds.
Motion to approve. Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries three zero. At this time, I'll open up to the floor, any business from the floor on waterworks, any business from the floor on waterworks? No business, this meeting is adjourned and we'll move right into the utility board meeting. I'd like to call the utility board meeting for December 10th. The rope call will add Mr. Conley and Mr. Troxel back to the rope call. Minutes of November 19th, 2014 public meeting.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five zero. Claims, Mrs. Clark, any additional claims?
No additional claims.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Correspondence, Mr. Volkmann, utilities?
No correspondence.
No reports, there's no old business, we have an item on A on new business, resolution 2014-18, is a resolution of transfer of funds within the category of appropriations.
Again, this is to, this is to clear off negative appropriations at the end of the year.
Motion to approve. Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Item B, award bid for the ultraviolet disinfection facility project per recommendation by Nies Engineering Incorporated. Mr. Volkmann or Mr. Lauren?
This is the upcoming ultraviolet project that you guys, that we, Nies Engineering did a study on and we got bids and we just opened the bids last Friday and there is a representative here from Nies, if you guys have any questions on that. He's got all the numbers and spreadsheets and stuff.
Mr. Chairman?
The recommendation from the engineers to award the bid to the theme of construction, in the amount of $3,128,000, that's what is in, but you could consider it tonight. The original budget for this project was $3 million, we're a little bit over on the budget proposal, but it's low anyway.
Mr. Volkmann, was that the lowest bidder?
That was the lowest bidder. And also as part of this project, it was compliant with our standard for PLA, PLA for the project and available wage.
Pledge of the board.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second, to award the bid, Mr. Volkmann, the company again?
In.
For the ultraviolet disinfection facility project. We have a motion and we have a second. Do we have a second?
Yes.
We have a second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
At this time, I'll open up to the floor for business from the floor regarding utilities, any business from the floor regarding utilities? No business from the floor, this is, this meeting is adjourned, we'll move right into the council meeting.
I'd like to call the sheriff, Tom, council meeting to order for Wednesday, December 10th, 2014, at 7:08. Let the record show that the rope call from the utility board is the same for this meeting. I am true to the ministry from November 19th, 2014 public meeting, pleasure of the council members.
So moved. Second. A second and discussion. Seeing and hearing, all in favor, signify aye.
Aye.
All in same sign. Minutes approved, five zero. Any additional claims, Mrs. Clark?
No additional claims.
Pleasure of the councilman on claims presented tonight. So moved. And a motion and a second. A second and discussion. Seeing and hearing, all in favor, signify aye.
Aye.
Aye. All in same sign. Claims are picked, five zero. Any correspondence at this time, Mr. Volkmann?
No correspondence.
This meeting. Reports? Any reports at this time?
We do have a report on, I'll pass this to Attorney Oshin, this is a retirement property that's been under consideration here for several months.
Mr. Oshin?
Mr. President, council members, there is a 17 acre parcel transaction that is now completed and it's negotiation of terms and conditions and responsibilities and payment. It's been the subject of significant dialogue and assessment and analysis over the past several months, as Bob indicated. I can report to you correctly and accurately tonight that that negotiation is now completed. You have the following transaction occurred for a 17 acre parcel first. The location is immediately west of the town of Merrill, municipal corporate boundaries, immediately south of the Foxford subdivision, and immediately east of your bike trail. Those are the general parameters, 17 acres, it's been surveyed, it's been appraised, it's been analyzed and identified. The parcel will be sold, it will be sold to an entity that has made a purchase agreement with the bank for the purchase of that property. Simultaneously pursuant to the terms of the agreement, there will be a transaction for the town to acquire that interest from that entity. Thereafter, when the due diligence is complete on the processing of the two transactions I just referenced, the title commitment will be issued for the conveyance to the adjoining eight single-family citizen residents of your town, but with the subdivision immediately north of the parcel, of a area approximately 100 by 200 plus or minus, there are legal descriptions, of course, there are plaques. This transaction will permit you to then develop and turn over to your park department a green parcel of land, which can and will be subject to development under park guidance for passive park purposes. I think those are the highlights, there are a lot of details, but my recommendation to you tonight, based upon authorization given by me to negotiate and complete this transaction, is that you approve the acquisition of the parcel from the entity that is purchasing the parcel from the bank, authorize signatures on all necessary documents, transaction instruments, conveyance, documents and the like, by the town council president or town manager with the treasurer, and thereafter subsequently authorize the transfer or sale of a small portion of the northernmost of the parcel, individual parcels to eight of your citizen single-family residents adjacent to this park. That's my report.
Thank you, councilors. Kind of hard to follow that somewhat, so with a lot of the parcels there, but they're easy.
Trust me, it's been that way, but we got through it and we got through it well.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Go ahead.
As part of that motion, should we also include approving the zoning commitment?
You should, I would recommend that be a second or a subsequent action. The planning commission has acted on this plaque, it's, and it has zoned it also, as I understand it, correctly processed by through your planning commission and active on here, so.
So the first motion would be to authorize the two acquisitions, one from the bank to the intermediary to the town, and then the second acquisition from the town to the eight residential buyers to the north.
Yes.
And also as part of that, and I'm just, let's just say this is my motion, as part of this motion, authorize town council president and, was it the town manager? I'm sorry.
Put that in the alternative as scheduling could occur.
Town, town council president or town manager to sign the documents on our behalf.
Yes. Tested by your clerk.
Yes.
I'll second that.
There's been a motion and a second, any discussion on the motion presented to us? Seeing and hearing, all in favor, signify aye.
Aye.
Aye. All in same sign. Motion carries five zero.
Mr. Chairman?
Councilman.
I'm sorry, I'll yield to Attorney Oshin if you were going to make a comment.
We contemplate the transaction for the first part of that transaction to be next week, so within the week, actually December 19th, that will occur, the bank to the entity and then the entity to the town.
Mr. President, I would like to also make a motion to approve the zoning commitment that's in front of us and has agreed upon in accordance with Attorney Oshin's comments.
There's been a motion to approve zoning commitment before us on this parcel?
Second.
And a second, any discussion? Seeing and hearing, all in favor, signify aye.
Aye.
Aye. All in same sign. Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Attorney Oshin, have you got anything with the financing of the amount, approval of the amount of financing, $220,000, was that not done out here before? I don't remember. How, how did I do that?
One more to do again, right?
The purchase price is $220,000.
I'll make a motion to approve the purchase price of $220,000.
There's been a motion and a second, any discussion on the motion for the document? Hearing and seeing, all in favor, signify aye.
Aye.
Aye. All in same sign. Motion carries five zero.
President, please let your record reflect that purchase price is less than, it's equal to or less than the price value.
Thank you. Any other staff, other works, or directors, you do it, anything to report?
One quick item. Leaf collection has gone very, very well this year, we are about completed. The one thing I wanted to get out to everybody is, please start calling us if you have leaves. We're only sending one truck out, they are not going up and down every street and every subdivision anymore, to assure that you get your leaves picked up, please give us a call and give us your address. We're able, we're doing both sides of town, both routes, north and south, and will likely continue as long as we can till, till the ground turns white.
Thank you. Attorney Oshin, anything?
No reports.
Mr. Gorman, anything on?
No reports.
Mr. Novosich, anything on parks?
Thank you, we received notice of authorization and our purchase order for me to offer the fencey trail this week, so that's going to allow us to tap into our grant fund and continue the preliminary engineering for the Phase Two and Three from Town Hall going up to Main Street.
Mr. Novosich, what was that grant fund?
That's the one we received this year for a million and a half.
Thank you. Deputy Chief Cruzan?
Nothing to report.
Chief Dalling?
No report tonight.
Council members, anything at this time?
One question for Mr. Volkmann or comment, could you give us an update on the Prior Ridge washout project?
This week, we met with officials from Dyer, Munster, and Prior Ridge Homeowners Association, along with the Little Tidymore Basin Commission Director, Dan Rippey, to review the preliminary plans. The plan is to actually, there's two lines, there's one that comes out of Prior Ridge and a line that runs down parallel with Main Street that we call our eight-four inch storm sewer, runs under the old railroad track that where the fencey line is, and then ties into the Prior Ridge line. The plan is to actually separate those two and take them to the north side of Main Street and to the main confluence where they discharge in Munster separately. Everybody approved that plan, the projected price of this project, engine estimate of the project was $1.3 million. That, right now, is under consideration, I think that was today, was going to be under consideration by the Little Tidymore Basin Commission or their participation in the project. It is anticipated that that will go off for bid in January, once the final design is completed, or award some kind of late January, February. Project start is anticipated March 1st, and it will be 90 to 120 days, at which time Main Street will be closed to all through traffic because they're going to, they're going through Main Street twice with a 72 and an 84 inch line.
Thank you.
Members, I have one other item here I want to bring up at this time. Our Sherwood Parks Foundation has an opportunity here to, with an endowment through Crown Point Community Foundation as a partner, to get some matching gifts and some funding, and what we have here is, I know they raised close to $5,000 already for the endowment fund, and they can raise up to $50,000 for this endowment fund for Sherwood Parks, so I'd like to get a donation from our town council here towards that park foundation, towards their, towards their $50,000. They have a timeline up to the end of this year to raise these funds, to get that 50 cents of the dollar match, so if any council member wants to be so kind to give a donation towards a sensitive, it's going to stay here in our community.
Mr. Chairman? Councilman Genslaw? I'd like to make a motion that we donate $10,000 to the Park Foundation. Motion for $10,000, is there a second? I'll second that. On discussion, Mrs. Clark, is there funding mechanism in place here to cover $10,000 towards this?
Yes, there is, we have money in our promotion fund, which is funded by cable TV revenue, there's certainly enough there to cover $10,000 donation.
Very good. Thank you, there's a motion and a second, any additional discussion on the donation? Hearing and seeing, all in favor, signify aye.
Aye.
Aye. All in same sign. Motion carries. Thank you very much, gentlemen, we'll be very happy to receive the donation. Next item, old business, any old business here in front of us, I don't see anything. Public hearing, we have a public hearing regarding ordinance number 1858, which is the only. It's ordinance providing the additional reduction of appropriations and various budgets of the town Sherwood of your 2004 year, on American Way there too. At this time, it's open to the floor, are there any comments regarding this ordinance? Mrs. Clark, you want to make a comment on this, or it's a, looks like it's a quick treasurer item here.
Yes, it is, there's, it's a two-fold ordinance, first, an additional appropriation for the special referral fund, which is from a court, they have some expenditures that they need to pay out, they have the funds, but they didn't have the appropriation, so we need additional appropriation for that. Secondly, reduction of those budgets that aren't going to use all of their appropriations for the end of the year, reducing those budgets to actually ease up budget reductions for 2015. So that's what this is about.
Since it's open to the floor, any comments regarding this item here in front of us this evening? Any items? Anything come forward regarding any comments on this? Public section, this is closed.
Mr. Chairman?
Councilman Schmidt?
I move to approve ordinance 1858.
Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
A second, any discussion? Hearing and seeing, all in favor, signify aye.
Aye.
Aye. All in same sign. Motion carries. Is there a motion to adopt, even on this council? Motion to adopt. Second. Any discussion on the adoption? Seeing and hearing, all in favor, signify aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five zero. At this time, I remissly need to go back, if there's any public comments regarding agenda items, now's the time to come up.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the town council, I didn't anticipate coming up here, President Troxel, but when the item of the Foxmore Park was brought up, I wanted to give the, our neighbors a little FYI. At our planning commission meeting in Merrillville on Tuesday night, we heard a 15 lot subdivision for the abandoned Broadmore Country Club, which butts up against the town of Sherwood, and I apologize for the record, Sean Eddet, Merrillville Town Councilman, Ward Six, 1612, East 87th Court, I'm also president of Merrillville Planning Commission. As I said, we had our workshop, which no action to the taking, gentlemen, but next Tuesday night, we will vote on that preliminary subdivision. Additionally, as you may know, streets have been installed on the Merrillville side of that subdivision, and Bob and Dorinda and Bruce Spires, our town manager, have been in contact about the park. I guess my question to the council is, is these lots are being taken down, probably, Mr. Ross, by the same entity that's taking down the Sherwood site from bank, what are the park improvements going to be on that parcel? As we see residential development on our Merrillville side, will there be park amenities for both sides of the, of the line, I guess, so to speak?
I believe that will be for, coming for our park board.
Okay.
To make those decisions on how they're going to use that park.
Okay, Mr. Ross, you said it was 17 acres?
Approximately.
That will be developed after what's been given to the residents in Sherwood, is that correct?
Well, I don't know that it used to work developed, it will be turned over to the park department for identification of planning.
Okay.
Passive park.
All right, because what we were showing on our plaque, gentlemen, is that obviously since that land is now taken up and developed by a park, we're going to end up having to stuff the streets on the Merrillville side that would have connected into the Sherwood network. Once that, unfortunately, we've both been sitting on this development for, I don't know about how long, four or five years now? Eight years it's been? So just an FYI that there is also development, movement on the Merrillville side as far as the developer, he wants to build 15 single-family homes, kind of up against US 30, approximately where the old clubhouse was, if you're familiar where that was, he wants to, he's put up his bond for his streets with the town, and again, we've got another subdivision proposal in the works on the Merrillville side, so just an FYI, I was curious about the park. Thank you, President.
Thank you. Any other comments regarding agenda items at this time?
Agenda items, we'll proceed under new business. We have ordinance number 1859, an ordinance establishing compensation salaries and wages for officials and employees of town Sherwood, Lake County, Indiana, classifying certain positions of employment together with rates of pay, repealing and amending prior ordinances in conflict here within and declaring that they were to exist. Mr. Volkmann, comment on this?
This is the annual salary ordinance that we are required to pass out here, it is reflective of a 3% across the board raise for all of the town employees. There were a couple of minor adjustments made to the text of the document for the quick treasurer's office, but other than that, there, it's the same ordinance that we had last year with the 3% raise, and then one other item that I should mention too is, you know, the past ordinances, since the levy was froze, we had included language in there that accommodated a possibility for a 2% bonus over the course of a year, based on review by Janice and I every, every quarter. That portion has been removed from the ordinance, we went through this whole year with a 3% raise, we weren't able to accommodate a bonus, it's not very likely that we would ever entertain that when we gave a raise to the employees, it is be able to do both in a given budget here.
Mr. Volkmann, with this, with the salary ordinance, so there is funding for that?
Yes, there is actually funding.
Pleasure of the council members on ordinance 1859.
Move to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Second. Motion approved in a second, any discussion on the ordinance? Seeing and hearing, all in favor, signify aye.
Aye.
Aye. All in same sign. Motion carries five zero.
Mr. President, would, can we choose to adopt this ordinance tonight, or should we wait till the December 30th meeting?
Councilman?
Either way.
I would. I'll personally get this evening.
Then I'll make a motion to adopt.
Second. To adopt, and a second, any discussion on the adoption? Seeing and hearing, none, all in favor, signify aye.
Aye.
Aye. All in same sign. Motion carries five zero. Thank you, gentlemen. Are employees happy with that? Next item, resolution 2014-19, a resolution to transfer funds within the category of appropriations. Mrs. Clark?
Once again, this is to clear up negative line items in the end budget.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
And a motion?
So moved.
Second. And a second, any discussion on the motion? Hearing and seeing, all in favor, signify aye.
Aye.
Aye. All in same sign. Motion carries five zero.
I have C, consider variance of use to allow the relocation of existing legal non-comforming upper and assigned to be relocated from 200 East Lincoln Highway to 228 East Lincoln Highway. This comes from us in the Board of Southern Appeals case number 14-10-36. Peticenter Lamar advertising, location 228 East Lincoln Highway, comes to us as a favorable recommendation from BZA 5-0. Mr. Volkmann?
This is at the corner of Boston and US 30, where the Alaskan pipeline was, the Pride of the Pearl, who owns that property, actually owns all of the property, all the way up to the Jalous property where the Euroon Plaza is, and this is merely relocating the sign that's on the corner all the way to the east edge of the property. Same sign, same proposal, so it's, it's basically staying on the property, he's trying to market that whole corner, and he's actually is under contract with Lamar for the sign location, this will allow the sign to remain and, for him to honor his contract with Lamar, but would also allow him to market the corner more violently.
Thank you. Pleasure of the variance consideration, council members?
Move to approve.
A motion to approve?
Second.
Second, any discussion on the motion?
Mr. President?
Councilman?
Can the motion be made based upon the finding, certification, or recommendation of the BZA?
Schmidt?
I'd be glad to change my motion. So approve that.
Second. All right. Any more discussion on the motion? Seeing and hearing, all in favor, signify aye.
Aye.
Aye. All in same sign. Motion carries five zero. Next item, B is consider deed transfers to correct legal description error at 2206 St. John Road, Kula Keisman for St. John Road improvements. Mr. Volkmann?
Mr. Chairman, several years ago, when we Mr. Chairman, several years ago, when we improved St. John Road, Mr. Hulick had needed an additional ten, ten feet of his property for road right-of-way, for consideration to the town. And actually doing some title work on his own property, the title attorney discovered an error in the legal description, and basically needed a parcel. Should've been on the east side, to the east side, to the west side of his, of his front yard. So this is actually, there's two deeds. We will convey a deed, convey them back, back to the west side of his yard, and he will convey back to the east side to us. So it's basically to correct an error.
Very good thinking, Mr. President. Pleasure of the council members on this item?
Motion to approve, second.
Motion to approve, second. Any discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all in favor, can we say aye?
Aye.
Opposing sign? Motion carries five zero. I M G, consider variance of use to allow a portion of the building to be used by Daniel Williams and up to five additional workers as an office for Big Dog Trucking, Inc., which is an Indiana retro company, on weekdays from five AM to eight PM with occasional exceptions. This is a Auto zoning appeals case number fourteen dash eleven dash forty-two. Petitioners are Robert D. and Mary Ann L. Williams, locations four hundred at Iroquois Road, that comes to us as an unfavorable recommendation from the BZA five zero. Mr. Boltman, like to brief us on this one here?
Certainly. Mr. Williams runs an in-home business at this location, and the nature of the business is, is mostly on the computer and telephone. It's the dispatching or connecting truckloads. He came to the BZA because that's not a listed use under home occupations, plug dispatching. So it did come to the BZA. There was quite a bit of remonstrance from adjoining property owners, mostly about people going in and out of, out of the property at different hours, or parking considerations. BZA did not consider it, and that henceforth why you have an unfavorable recommendation.
Mr. Boltman, just a question here. The use, that was described, is that used available in any other zoning area in our community?
Certain commercial zones.
Thank you. All right. Pleasure of the council members?
Chairman, motion to deny.
Been a motion to deny? Is there a second?
Second. Hold. Mr. Chairman, wouldn't that be a motion to approve?
Approve.
Would be unfavorable recommendation.
All right. I take that back. Motion to approve, second. Been a motion, a second. Any discussion?
Again, based upon records, to make certification of BZA and your findings.
Then the motion, thank you. Second. Any additional discussion at this time? Hearing and seeing none, all in favor, can we say aye?
Aye.
Opposing sign? Motion carries five zero.
Mr. President?
Counselor?
So that your record is clear, the approval is of the unfavorable requisation, hence the denial of the application.
Yes.
So it's clear I can write.
Item F, consider issuing business license for massage establishment to Leland Wowe, doing business as, arguing to a moon massage for a board of safety recommendation. Mr. Boltman?
This is located around forty-one by Longshots, and that center right there, and it's for a massage parlor. Our ordinance is pretty strict on that. We have the old ordinance on the books. There's a lot of review. The police department did background checks on, on the individual applying for this license. So actually, the premise that it goes to is there's an application process. The police do a background check on the individual. The board of safety does a review of that, a recommendation, and the final say for the ready-to-use license, seeing for a massage establishment, comes back to the town council. So it has a pretty strenuous review process for, for business within the community.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
With us, just receiving all the information that we need on this, I move to the first.
There's been a motion to defer. I'll second, it's a second. Any discussion on the deferral? Hearing and seeing none, all in favor, can we say aye?
Aye.
Opposing sign? Motion carries five zero for the deferral. I M G, consider reduction of improvement surety for Shapsan Main to fifty-seven thousand nine thirty-eight and forty-five cents for maintenance bond. The original bond amount, five hundred and seventy-eight thousand three eighty-four fifty. Mr. Boltman?
This is for the public improvements that were installed for the Shapsan Main at mall, and this is a reduction in their performance bond to maintenance. So this, we'll retain this fifty-seven thousand for two years, period.
Thank you.
Move to approve, Mr. Chairman.
A motion to approve?
Second, with a question.
Second.
Mr. Boltman, the remaining amount of fifty, roughly fifty-eight thousand, does that represent the share for Phase Two, or is that?
All of it.
Still all Phase One?
No, all, everything was done, all of the sewers and everything are done for Phase Two as well.
Okay.
There may be some bonding there for performance once they come in and present a development plan for that. You know, have to.
Okay.
Put a new bond if there, if it's needed for that section. I think they got most everything done.
Thank you. Okay, there's a motion, a second. Any additional discussion at this time? Hearing and seeing none, all in favor, can we say aye?
Aye.
Opposing sign? Motion carries five zero. Next item is consider donations of four hundred and seventy dollars. Ms. Clark, normally transpondoscopy, would you like to read these?
I would love to. Under park donations from Stardust Bowl Incorporated, we have one hundred dollars. Under animal control donations, we have Roger Benry for twenty-five dollars, Kelly Wanto for twenty-five dollars, Lynn, Luziothis, twenty dollars, and Robert Fostow for fifty dollars. And finally, under fire equipment donations, we have Barbara Hooker for fifty dollars, and Marifon Petroleum Company for two hundred dollars. That's it.
We have grand total of four hundred and seventy dollars for donations. Pleasure of the council to accept these?
Move to approve.
All in favor, a second. Any discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all in favor, can we say aye?
Aye.
Opposing sign? Motion carries five zero. Next item is the swearing-in ceremony. We have two newly elected officials here. We have, we have Tom J. Smith, four-term councilman, who's sworn in by Kenneth Anderson, Tom Judge. And we have Kevin Conley, war two councilman, who's sworn in by Harold Slater, fifth district state rep, who's sworn in. So the procedure for this will be coming front here for the dais. Go with Mr. Smith first, since he's listed first.
Can everybody hear? Okay, it's a pleasure to be able to swear in Tom Schmidt, one of the hardest-working men in Sherable. I think everybody in the community knows him. And what's really great about this opportunity is it's a reaffirmation of what happened two hundred and twenty-five years ago when this country was created. Elections are the most important things that we do. They're the most important opportunities that we as a community share, and we're very fortunate that those elections have been held through all sorts of times. During war, Civil War, we held an election. World War Two, we held an election. This country is strong because of the election process. We're very fortunate that we have one of the elected officials here in Sherable, that's Mr. Tom Schmidt. It's an honor to be, to ask him to swear. Tom, you say after me? Aye, Tom Schmidt.
Aye, Tom J. Schmidt.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
United States.
And the Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the State of Indiana.
The State of Indiana.
And that I will faithfully, impartially, and diligently.
I will faithfully, impartially, and diligently.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of the Office of Town Council.
Of the Office of the Town Council.
Of the Sherable Ward Number Four.
Of the Sherable Ward Four.
According to the law and the best of my ability.
According to the law and the best of my ability.
All right, go ahead, Tom.
Tom, I'm gonna say a few words.
Thanks. I don't know if this is off or not. If everybody can hear me, I don't, I never need a mic, but yeah, thank you very much for coming out tonight. It's, actually, it's an honor to start my third term in January, so I'm really blessed by all the people that's helped me get what you're on my hat, and helped, and helped me with the town projects and stuff. I really appreciate everything. My family, my friends, everyone that's, that's involved in my life is very important to me. I'm people's person we know, and I care, I care about everybody, so I just want to thank you very much for coming out. It's a very, it's a very honor to serve the town. My, my passion for this job isn't no different than it was when I started eight years ago, so I'll be, I'll be a councilman that's always available, too. Appreciate it very much. Thank you very much.
Next, Kevin Conley, war two councilman, who's sworn in again by Harold Slater, fifth district state rep.
You know, I've been involved in this for twelve years, and we still have problems with microphones. Kevin's asked me to do this, and it is a tremendous privilege. I always consider swearing in a, a promise to the people. We go to the polls, we cast our vote, and we hope that people will do the job. I have a little doubt that both of these men will do it at the best of their ability, and Kevin's the kind of person, he wants to do it now, right now, and that's a great quality as well. So we have our picture takers. Ready? Kevin, are you ready to take the oath of office?
I'm ready.
Please raise your right hand. I, Kevin Conley, do solemnly swear.
I, Kevin Conley, do solemnly swear.
To support the Constitution of the United States.
To support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Indiana.
And the Constitution of the State of Indiana.
And I will faithfully and impartially.
I will faithfully and impartially.
Diligently discharge.
Diligently discharge.
The duties of the Office of Sherable Town Council.
The duties of the Office of Sherable Town Council.
According to the law.
According to the law.
And to the best of my ability.
And to the best of my ability.
You guys, this morning, congratulations.
Thank you.
About twenty minutes, right?
At least.
It truly is a privilege to serve the town, you know, without a doubt. And thanks to all of you for being here for Tom and I, to show your support. The, the time dedicated to a campaign is pretty tremendous. You can't do it without the support of the family. Thanks to my wife, Katie, Cora, Katie. Couldn't do it without her support. My kids, Mary Rose and Jim Rair, my mom's here, my aunt and uncle. Thank you. You know, it dawned on me today, almost two years ago to the day, State Representative Hal Slater swore me in to serve the rest of his term that he won in two thousand and ten. So it was only fitting that he do the honors this evening, and congratulations to you, Alan, your reelection. Thank you very much.
We do have some light refreshments back there at the end of the meeting. At this time, I'd like to open the meeting to the floor, for any business from the floor regarding town council business. Any business from the floor? Any business from the floor? Seeing and hearing none, this being adjourned at the.